Good evening and welcome to tonight's telephone town hall hosted by the Jefferson County Board of Commissioners. I'm Roger, your moderator for tonight's discussion with Commissioners Andy Kerr, Tracy Krafttharp, and Leslie Dahlkemper, along with County Manager Joe Kirby and several other subject matter experts tonight. We are simulcasting tonight's event in Spanish. And before we get going, I'm going to pause and ask for further information on how to participate in Spanish from one of our county's Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Team members, Diana Cardenas. Diana, go ahead.
Saludos. Si desean participar en español, por favor oprima el asterisco y luego cero.
All right, thank you. Our topics for this evening include the property valuation process that Jefferson County recently completed and resources for property owners to better understand their appraisals, where Jefferson County is deploying federal funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to offset the economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, and how the ongoing Together Jeffco Plans and Regulations Update will shape the landscape of our county moving into the future, along with how your voice can be heard during this two-year-long process. We want to invite you to submit any questions you might have for county leadership as well. Although tonight's discussion will focus mainly on these three topics, feel free to ask any county issue, any question of any county issue that is important to you. You can just listen, but if you have a question, press star three on your phone. An operator will take down some basic information and you'll be transferred back to listen to the call until you are called upon. So press star three now if you already know your question, and this is the same process we'll use throughout the call. If you hear something that sparks a question, please press star three. And again, I'm going to ask Diana to remind folks how to transfer to our Spanish simulcast if they prefer to participate in Spanish tonight. Go ahead.
Saludos. Si desean participar en español, por favor oprima el asterisco y luego cero.
Before we send it over to Commissioner Dahlkemper to kick off tonight's discussion, we wanted to survey those listening on several county-related subjects. To participate, it's easy to participate, really, just use your telephone keypad to enter the number of your response. So here's our first survey question. In general, would you say that you get a good or bad value for your Jefferson County taxes? Press one for strongly good, press two for somewhat good, press three for somewhat bad, and press four for strongly bad. Again, if, please, how would, what would you say you get, would you say you get a good or bad value for your Jefferson County taxes? Press one for strongly good, two for somewhat good, three for somewhat bad, or four for strongly bad. Record your vote now by pressing one, two, or three, and we'll share the results with you later and have another question later in the town hall as well. So with all that, let's turn it over to Commissioner Dahlkemper. Go ahead.
Great, thanks so much, Roger. Welcome, everyone. I'm Leslie Dahlkemper. I represent District Three or South Jeffco. It includes Littleton, Morrison, Conifer, and portions of Lakewood and Evergreen. Joining us in a few minutes will be Jefferson County Assessor Scott Kersgaard to discuss how his office determines property values and resources for property owners to better understand their appraisals. The role of the assessor's office is to identify, describe, and value all property located in Jefferson County and create the tax roll by applying taxing authority mill levies to taxable assessed valuation of property. Not to worry, because Assessor Kersgaard is going to break all of that down for us in just a moment. But before we go to Scott, a quick reminder, if you have a question, press star three now on your phone. Scott, thanks so much for joining us. What does all this exactly mean for Jeffco property owners?
Good afternoon and good evening, everybody. Before we dive into our role on how property is assessed and what resources we have for constituents, I wanted to share the vision we have for our office, which is to be the most trusted and efficient assessor's office in Colorado. How do we do that? We do that by providing access, transparency, and innovation. Our office is open to the public every day of the week, Monday through Thursday, and my own phone number, my, oh, my own phone rolls to my cellphone when I'm not there, so people calling me can always reach me whether I'm in the office or not. We leverage the best available technology to make assessments as accurate as possible and to streamline internal and external processes. We practice an open-door policy with our constituents to be forthright in how we operate and the services we provide. We aim to empower our constituents with information about our services through an easy-to-use website, ongoing communication, and opportunities to speak with county leadership.
Great, Scott, thanks so much for that. A friendly reminder, if you have a question, press star three now on your phone, and I already see a couple of questions are coming through. Let's now take some time to address those questions and concerns from the Jeffco community. Scott, just one quick follow-up question. Colorado law mandates that assessors revalue all real estate in their counties based on a specific appraisal date, which for this latest process was June 30, 2022. Share more with us about this process and how it affects the notice of valuation that many Jeffco property owners received earlier this year. How does that work?
We do value properties based on what they're worth on June 30 of every even-numbered year, and that's set by the legislature or by state law. We have no discretion in that. June 30 could fall on a day when values plummet for some reason, or they could fall on a day when Apple announces they're moving their offices to Jeffco and values soar on that day. It really doesn't matter. We just have to value them based on that day. And sometimes that feels fair and sometimes it doesn't. This last time, June 30 of 2022, was pretty much a peak in the market, maybe not the highest of that year, but it was pretty close to it. Values have fallen a little bit since then for a lot of neighborhoods, a lot of areas, but that doesn't affect our valuation process because it's stuck in time there. And we create these values by looking at, go ahead.
Oh, no, that's okay. Please go ahead.
We set those values by looking at what properties have sold for during the two years prior to that. And we had about 25,000 homes that were sold in the two years prior to June 30, 2022. And we look at every one of those sales to determine what properties in those neighborhoods are worth, June 30 of 2022. So I hope that's helpful.
Thanks, Scott. And I know you and your team have been working hard with community members across Jefferson County, especially when it comes to appeals. And it's my understanding that the deadline for appealing evaluation was June 8, and those who did make an appeal will receive a notice of determination by August 15. Would you share a little more, go into a little bit more detail about what the appeals process looks like and what steps constituents can take to appeal their determination further to the Board of Equalization?
I mean, we look at every appeal individually, and we had more appeals this year than ever before, but we nonetheless were able to look at each one of them as an individual, you know, property appeal. We looked at the information submitted by property owners in every single case before making our determination. So, you know, we were swamped, but we were still able to do our jobs, I think. And what we're looking at is, are we wrong? Was our value wrong? Was it too high? And if it was, then we reduce the value. Whether we reduce it to what the property owner thinks we should reduce it to or not is another story. Sometimes we do, and sometimes we, you know, go partway down to what their number was. You know, we're just trying to be fair in all cases. And I have to say that even though a lot of people appealed this year, the vast majority of property owners did not appeal. And so we owe it to them to be fair and not to just lower values just because somebody appeals, because that wouldn't be fair to those who don't appeal. If when you get your notice of determination, and you said we had to get them to people by August 15, that's actually when they have to be postmarked by our office. But we are done with the appeals, and we are sending them to the printer now. So a lot of people will probably get their notices by August 15, I would hope. If they don't like our determination, if they don't like our value, they can go to the next level, which is the Board of Equalization. And the notice of determination that we send in the mail actually has on it the form that people can fill out to appeal to the next level, the BOE. And at that level, the county assessor's office, my employees, we will be there, but we're not the determiners. We are witnesses. All we do is talk about why we valued it where we did, why we oppose this appeal if we do, and then, you know, an independent referee makes that determination. So we're not the deciders at that level.
Great, thanks, Scott. I know we've got a lot of questions from those who are tuning in tonight, and in just a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Roger to help field those listener questions and comments. Just briefly, if you could tell us more about the abatement process and some of the misconceptions about the assessor's office's role in the county tax process, that would be great, and then I'll turn it over to Roger.
Well, the abatement process, you can file for an abatement, but not until January 1, and then you have two years in which to file for an abatement of your 2024 taxes, which are the 2023 taxes, I'm sorry, payable in 2024. And the abatement process is designed primarily to help people who overpaid their taxes for whatever reason. It's not primarily designed as a secondary appeal process, although people can turn in abatements that are, you know, basically asking us to relook at their property value, and we will certainly do that if they file an abatement. But again, that can't be done until January 1 of this next year. I lost my train of thought in terms of what the other question was there, Leslie.
It was regarding the misconceptions about the assessor's office's role in the county tax process.
Sure. We do not set taxes by any stretch. All we do is set values. The state legislature sets an assessment rate, and they also often set exemptions, possibly exempting the first $50,000, let's say, of a person's property value from being taxed at all. And then they set an assessment rate, and we take the value of the property multiplied by the assessment rate, which is usually around 7%. It's going to be a little less this year, but just for even numbers, call it 7%. And then we, and that would create a value of, say, if it was a million-dollar property, it would then be assessed at $70,000, 7% of a million. And then we apply the mill levies, which are set by the taxing authorities. They're not set by the assessor's office. Those taxing authorities include the school district, the county itself, most of the cities within Jefferson County, and about 200 other taxing authorities, fire districts, recreation districts, sewer districts, you name it. And we keep track of the maps of Jefferson Counties so we know what districts, what taxing authorities every property is in, and we apply the mills from each of those districts to that property to create the tax roll, which we send to the county treasurer's office, and they then send out the tax bill. I personally, in my office, we're not trying to raise taxes. That's not our role. We don't want to keep values high in order to have more tax money coming into Jefferson County. I never even discuss valuations with the county budget office or the commissioners. I mean, they could call me and say, Scott, you know, we need to keep values up because we need our revenue coming in, but they don't make that call, and that's not my job. You know, we just try to value properties fairly based on what they're worth with really no consideration of what the taxes are going to be, because those are set by other people, not by us.
Great. Thanks so much, Scott, for unpacking that. Stay with us. We're going to go next to Roger to field some of those listener questions. Roger?
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Scott. Again, if you would like to ask a question, press star three on your telephone keypad. You'll be directed to an operator who will take down some basic information and get you in the queue. And that's just what Mike did. And Mike, we're going to go to you first. Go ahead.
Yes, I called in to find out what is Jefferson County planning to do with the ungodly amount of money that's going to come in when everybody's properties have been valued so much higher than they were two years ago? It's not, it's off the charts. Do you have a plan for all this windfall?
Thanks, Mike. Stephanie, go ahead.
Great. Well, Mike, thank you so much for the question. This is Stephanie Corbo, and I am the Chief Financial Officer here at the county. And I'd like to answer that, but give you a little bit of background information first. So Jefferson County does collect all property tax. That means all the mill levies for the county, as well as the school district and special districts. On average, we keep about 24 cents for every dollar that we collect. However, with the increase in our property taxes, the revenue for property taxes is limited for Jefferson County under TABR. And so that means that the majority of this extra money is going to be refunded back to the property taxpayer. So for example, the TABR formula only allows our revenue to grow based on inflation and the net value of new construction. However, there's another statute that's an annual levy law that doesn't allow our property taxes to grow more than 5.5%. So whichever of those situations is the lowest is how much our revenue can grow for property taxes. So the majority of that will be refunded. I'd also like to just remind everyone listening in that for the 2022 property tax collection, we will be refunding about $39.5 million in the form of checks. Thank you so much for your question, Mike.
Thank you. Stephanie, Jim is next. Go right ahead.
Thanks for taking my call. I'm curious, you answered part of the question with the last, with the last question that was asked. My value increased by 100,000 from the year, from the two years prior. So obviously, my taxes have increased by about $750 for that, for the valuation. Now that, now that $750,000, it might get some discount on that, but the overall value is going to be set at that and then increase again in two years and then increase again in two years. Is there a way other than going through the state legislature to help a senior not have to deal with this incredible increase in property values over the long term? Because at my age, on social security, it's going to be kind of hard to keep up with that, and I'm going to have to, at some point in time, decide whether I keep my house or have to sell it simply because I can't keep up with the taxes. Are you there?
Tracy, do you want to, yep, sir. Thank you, Jim, for that. Commissioner Krafttharp, you want to start, then if Scott has some additional comments, he can jump in.
I would like to jump in. Thanks, Roger. Hey, Jim, have you applied for the senior property tax exemption?
Yeah, yes, I did.
Okay, then that's perfect. So for those people who have not, you want to apply for that, Scott can come on, and he can talk about the actual logistics of how that works. But that deadline is July 15. But even still, if people have not done that, then they should fill out that form online. It's an electronic form. It takes about five minutes to be able to do. But that will help you in your property taxes a lot. I personally am experiencing this myself. So you have to be over 65, you have to have lived in your house for 10 years. However, I think in property, in Ball Initiative HH, which is up this fall, part of what it says there, there's a whole lot that it says, but part of what it says there is that your property tax exemption can be portable, meaning you can move from home to home starting in 2025. So I was excited to hear your question, Jim. I'm glad to hear that you applied for that. Other people should do so. And Scott, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, not really. It will become portable if this passes, and it changes a little bit. It was exempting half of the first 200,000 of value, and now it will exempt just literally the first 100,000, which is the same for most people. The assessor has really no discretion over taxes whatsoever. You know, I wish there were things we could do to help people, because there are a lot of people who are in a bad position. But I also want to be clear that taxes haven't been set yet. A lot of people are talking about values up 35%, so taxes will be up 35%, but that's not the case. Taxes for most people won't be up as much as values were up. In fact, one of the things in Proposition HH says that the taxing authorities, the fire districts, et cetera, can only increase their budgets if HH passes by the amount of inflation unless they have a public vote or they take public comment. So for a lot of taxing authorities, they will actually be reducing their mill levies for next year, at least if HH passes.
All right, thank you. Let's hear next from Laura. Laura, go ahead.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity. So I have a similar question, but I wanted to know regarding property taxes, if the commissioners are considering lowering the mill levies to just kind of resolve this once and for all.
Oh, Laura, thank you for that question. This is Commissioner Andy Kerr. And that's absolutely one of the, one of the many things that the commissioners can look at. And one of the, one of the things, and as I was listening to your question, right at the end, you said, take care of it once and for all. You know, lowering the mill levy might be a temporary solution, but depending on certainly the economy, assessment in the future and everything, it could actually end up damaging our economy in the long run. So for a short-term solution, yes, that is certainly one of the things on the table. I don't think any of the things that we're looking at are the silver bullet for the long-term solution. So there's, it's going to be a lot of different things. Everything, literally everything is on the, on the table as we look at this, because we know that there are a lot of people that are really, you know, having trouble figuring out what they're going to do with their, paying their property taxes next year, and we want to make sure that we can make that as easy as possible and that future generations of folks here in Jeffco have the services that they deserve as well. Thanks for your question.
All right. Let's hear from Mary next. Mary, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, back when we got the evaluations for our properties, I sent in my objection, and I never have heard back, and I thought we were supposed to get that by end of June. And I heard what you said earlier, and I'm not sure which determination you were talking about, but I wondered if mine got lost in the mail or have some of those not been returned yet to those of us who sent those in.
Okay, this is Scott. The assessor's office has until August 15 to send out the determinations. So I can't say definitively that yours didn't get lost, but we have not sent out any notices of determination yet. We just finished our work reviewing all of the appeals, and the notices of determination, I think, have been sent to the printer, and they'll be going out in the mail in the next few days. So you should get your notice of determination within a week or so.
All right, thank you, Scott. Thanks again for all the great questions and feedback, and also thank you to Jefferson County Assessor Scott Kersgaard for providing great insight into the day-to-day workings of his office and how it impacts us. Before we start our next topic, let's turn and ask our second survey question. Again, it's easy to participate. All you have to do is use your telephone keypad to enter the number of your response. Currently, the Jefferson County Board of Commissioners, Board of County Commissioners holds public hearings, a hearing every Tuesday beginning at 8:00 a.m. If they were to change the start time from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., would that have an impact on your attendance or participation? So again, if the Board of County Commissioners changed those hearing times, the beginning to start time from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. on Tuesday, would that have an impact on your attendance or participation? Press one for yes, that would increase your chance of attendance or participation. Press two, yes, but it would decrease your chance of attendance or participation. And press three, if no, it would not impact or make a difference in your attendance or participation. Please record your vote now, and while you're recording, while you're recording your vote, I'm going to turn the call over to Commissioner Andy Kerr. It's your turn now. Go ahead.
Great, thank you, Roger. I'm Andy Kerr. I represent District Two, the central part of Jefferson County, including Wheat Ridge and parts of Lakewood, Golden, and Evergreen. Joining us here in just a minute is Mary O'Neill, Director of Grants and Procurement for Jefferson County. We'll be discussing how the county is deploying federal funds from the American Rescue Plan Act to offset the economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. In this section of the town hall, we'd like to highlight some of the work our ARPA team has done over the past months to deliver services for Jeffco residents stemming from this one-time infusion of federal dollars. Thank you for joining us, Mary.
Thank you, Commissioner. And as Commissioner Kerr just said, Jefferson County was awarded $113 million in federal funding after President Biden signed into law the American Rescue Plan Act in March of 2021. Though these funds are to offset the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic that it had on Jefferson County and its constituents, federal guidelines allow this money to be spent not only on emergency needs, but also to help support families and businesses, maintain vital public services, and help build a strong, resilient, and equitable future. With those objectives in mind, and after extensive community and employee input, the Board of County Commissioners approved a set of priority areas with corresponding task forces to consider a range of projects. The task forces include behavioral health, county services and operations, economic recovery, food insecurity, housing, public health and safety, revenue replacement, and workforce readiness. As of May, nearly $10 million have been spent, and the remaining federal funds have been obligated to upcoming projects. For specific information on each task force and funding guidelines, or to check out our interactive ARPA dashboard, please visit www.jeffco.us/ARPA.
Thank you for that information, Mary. And remember, if you have a question, please press star three now on your phone. And so we're going to take some time to address some of these questions and concerns from the Jeffco community. I have some frequently asked questions, but I see that quite a few of them are overlapping with the questions that we're getting from folks. So we're going to go ahead, and again, if you have a question, please press star three now on your phone. And Roger, we're going to go to...
All right, let's hear from James first. James, go ahead.
You're on.
Oh, my question was, with, I've been hearing in foothills, with the property taxes going up, people are unable to afford the housing because they cannot get insured, and they cannot get mortgages, and I'm a senior looking at selling my home, but I find it difficult that people are unable to purchase homes up here in the foothills of Jefferson County.
James, this is, um, thank you. Thanks so much, Roger. James, thanks so much for your, your comment and your question. You know, state officials estimate that half of Colorado's population lives in areas that are considered high-risk for wildfire, and it's an issue that we take very seriously in Jeffco, given our number-one ranking statewide for wildfire risk and the potential risk for property damage. And one of the things that I wanted to share with you is that there are multiple efforts at the local, state, and regional level to tackle this issue, especially when it comes to areas like homeowners' insurance. And I hear your point, too, about evaluation, valuation of homes as well. But, you know, we've done a couple of different, we've implemented a couple of different strategies in Jefferson County to help reduce wildfire risk, in part to help with that homeowners' insurance issue. Two-thirds of Jefferson County is in the wildland urban interface, communities like Evergreen and Conifer and Pine that are high-risk. For example, defensible space is a huge part of the effort to clear vegetation around your... your home so firefighters can do more to protect it should you encounter a wildfire. In Jeffco, for example, if you pull a building permit on your home, you'll be asked to use fire ignition-resistant materials if you're in the wildland urban interface. And most importantly, we have launched our Together Jeffco initiative, more on that coming up in just a moment, to get your input and your neighbors' input in the foothills community and across all of Jefferson County on efforts to help protect our communities against the threat of wildfire. Those are just a couple of the efforts underway. The legislature also passed a bill to, this past legislative session, to look at insurance-related issues in the wildland urban interface and more issue, more work to be done on this as well as we move forward. Thanks so much, James.
Okay, this is Commissioner Andy Kerr again. Mary O'Neil, I'm going to ask you one of the questions we have coming in. What are some of the successes to come from ARPA funding thus far? And what are some upcoming projects Jeffco residents should be on the lookout for?
Thank you, Commissioner. The first project I'd like to mention is the Food Grant Program. The Board has dedicated $2,050,000 to address food insecurity within the county. We opened an application process and have awarded funding to 12 organizations. And the really great thing about this program is that these organizations are addressing the food delivery infrastructure within the county. So the benefits that come from the program will impact food insecurity in future years as well as now. Another project I'd like to highlight, which is upcoming, is the Digital Equity Program. One of the things we learned in our 2021 Community-Wide Needs Assessment was that the impact of the digital gap in the Jefferson County community, and what we mean by digital gap is that young people and adults were not able to access employment opportunities or school due to a lack of computer technology in the home. Through the Digital Equity Program, we are piggybacking on a program already in place with Jeffco Public Libraries, where they have a lending program for people who take and pass a class, but now, instead of just borrowing a computer, they'll be able to receive a laptop or tablet for their home. And this project came in at about $860,000.
All right, thank you, Mary. We had a comment from Steve that came in that that last question, the second survey we questioned was, was confusing. We took a little look around the room and everyone nodded their head and said, by gosh, it was confusing. So I'm going to ask it again and change it up a little so we make sure we get good input from all of you on that question. Again, the question was around, should the Board of County Commissioners is, holds their public hearing every Tuesday beginning at 8:00 AM? If they were to change the start time from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, would that make it easier or more difficult to participate and attend? So press 1 if changing from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM would increase your chance of attendance or participation, make it easier, better for you to attend or participate in that public hearing. Press 2 if changing it from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM would make it harder to participate, decrease your chance of attendance or participation. And press 3 if it's neutral. It doesn't make it easier or better for you or worse for you to participate or attend. So 1, if it increases your ability to attend and participate. 2, if it decreases your ability to attend or participate. And 3, if it doesn't make a difference. And now that we've hopefully cleared that up for everyone, including several of us in the room, we are going to go to Tom next. Tom, what's your question?
Yes, I had a question about short-term rentals. I live in Conifer and we've seen a proliferation of people buying houses who don't live here on a permanent basis, but they rent them out for short-term via V-Verbo or Airbnb. When I went to the hearing for one of these, the commissioner who approved the permit was very favorable to the applicant. So were the staff. They all wanted to approve it, even though many neighbors came out and said, hey, listen, we have a problem with wildfire up here, we have a problem with people speeding, we have a problem with noise and disturbance. So what is the commissioners doing about short-term rentals? I would like to request three things. Number one, we get lower assessments because of the risk of wildfire and the short-term rentals. Number two, I'd like Jefferson County to produce a map of what exactly houses are in short-term rentals. And number three, as part of the application process for short-term rentals, people share their mortgage agreement. One recently near us required the mortgage agreement that the purchaser of the property live here permanently, and they don't live here permanently. So what is being done about short-term rentals?
Good evening, Tom. This is Heather Gutherlis. I am the Long Range Planning Supervisor for Jefferson County Planning and Zoning. And we have a couple of things that we're doing about short-term rentals right now. First, I want to let you know that as far as what the current process, what the current process is for the short-term rentals in unincorporated Jefferson County. I do want to emphasize that this is unincorporated Jefferson County and different cities within the county may have their own regulations regarding short-term rentals. You were saying that you went to a Board of Adjustment hearing for short-term rentals, and that is the first step of our two-step process for short-term rentals currently. The special, the first step is to have an applicant apply for a special exception with the Board of Adjustment. This process does go to a public hearing before the Board of Adjustment. And at that hearing, they evaluate certain criteria, which are currently laid out in our zoning resolution, that the applicant would need to meet to be approved for that. If that short-term rental special exception is approved, then there is a second step that the applicant needs to do in actually obtaining the short-term rental permit. And that is, that permit is where the applicant actually demonstrates that they are meeting the criteria that they've agreed to at that Board of Adjustment hearing. For example, one requirement is updating defensible space. And so that's something that they would agree to at the Board of Adjustment hearing, and then they would actually implement that before they could get their permit. Then after six months, there is a new short-term rental hearing that is required so that the Board of Adjustment can look at whether or not that should be renewed or not. And then if that short-term rental is approved again, then they must renew on an annual basis through the Board of Adjustment hearing. So that's our current process. The county is also looking at updating our short-term rental regulations. And this is a process that's happening right now. We actually recently scheduled some meetings to talk with the public about short-term rentals and what they would want to see with these regulation changes. Those meetings are coming up in August and September. The first meeting is August 16th, and that's going to be a virtual meeting. The second meeting is August 30th, and that's going to be in-person. And then the third meeting is on September 12th, and that is also a virtual meeting. Check planning.jeffco.us for the specific times and locations or that link to the virtual meeting, and we hope to get your input on these regulation changes.
Thanks, Heather. Thanks so much. So just now that everybody has a pen and paper, let's, so they could jot this down. As Heather said, Planning and Zoning wants to hear from you. They want to get your feedback and they want to talk with you and listen to your concerns about short-term rentals. So there, as Heather said, there's three meetings that are scheduled. The first one coming up is August 16th at 6:00 PM, and that will be held virtually. So what does that mean? Where can you find out that information? You can find that out at www.jeffco.us/2613/Regulation-Updates. Got that? Or call us tomorrow and we'll give you that information. Roger, you want to go on to some more questions?
I will. Let's go to Rachel next. Rachel, it's your turn. Go ahead.
Hi, I want to know the address. Where do the commissioners meet? I'll show up at 9 o'clock, but I don't know where to go.
Great, thanks, Rachel. This is Commissioner Andy Kerr again, and we're looking forward to seeing you either at 8 or 9 o'clock, depending on how our, our survey and other feedback goes. So we're at the Jefferson County Government Center. It's also the Jefferson County Courthouse, District 1 Judicial House. You might, you might know it, and I'm never supposed to say this out loud, but a lot of people know it as the Taj Mahal. It was named that a long time before any of us were here. And it is at 100 Jefferson County Parkway, and technically in the city of Golden, but we are the, the county building. And so on those Tuesday mornings, we meet in the hearing room, which as you walk in the front door, and there are two, two wings on either side, that if you go to the right through the security, that goes into the courthouse. To the left, you'll see some elevators to the left. Our hearing room is actually on the first floor. So if you're just looking at the elevators over there on the, the government center side, the hearing room is just a little bit to the right. Just go a few steps down the hallway to the right and you'll see the, the hearing room there. So we're looking forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerr. Thanks for throwing it over here to me. This is Commissioner Tracy Krafttharp, and I'm from District 1, which is the north area of the county. That is Arvada and parts of Golden and Westminster and parts of Wheat Ridge. So joining me, as we've already heard, from, as our expert in planning and zoning for this segment, is Heather Gutherlis. Heather is our Planning Supervisor for Long Range Planning with our Planning and Zoning Division. So Heather and I will be discussing how the ongoing Together Jeffco plans and regulations update will, will totally shape the landscape of our county moving forward into the future. Over the next couple of months, we hope to gather as much public input as possible. And our first survey regarding your vision for the future of Jeffco is online now and it closes at the end of August. So I have another website for you to take that survey, learn more, how to get involved, and to make your voice heard. And that's www.TogetherJeffco.com. Thanks for joining us, Heather. You want to talk to us about Together Jeffco?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Krafttharp. Together Jeffco is an 18 to 24-month project with the goal of designing land use, planning for wildfire evacuation, and creating transportation policies that are aligned and provide that cohesive vision for the future of Jefferson County while identifying priorities for addressing growth, services, and land use regulation. This comprehensive project tackles updates to the Comprehensive Plan, Transportation and Mobility Plan, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, Unified Land Use Code, and an evacuation annex for the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan.
Heather, can you go over the timeline for Together Jeffco from the input to implementation?
Yeah, like I said before, it's an 18 to 24-month timeframe. But during that timeframe, the plans are going to be updated in the first 18 months. So right now, we're in the kickoff phase of Together Jeffco, where we're trying to get the word out. And like you said, Commissioner Krafttharp, there's the survey that we would like people to take on the website, www.TogetherJeffco.com. And that survey closes in, at the end of August. After that point, we'll be looking more into developing some vision and value statements. That'll be kind of our next segment of public participation. And that will go through the beginning of next year. And then we'll do additional public involvement throughout the rest of the year and finishing up with those plan updates around the fall of next year. With the regulations, those will be going on at the same time, but then they'll continue for an additional six months after the plan updates so that we can potentially put, put some of those policies that we've created with the plans into regulation and actually implement those.
Heather, how, why does the county find that it's important to tackle all these different regulatory plans all at the same time?
That is a great question. And I, I think this is an incredible opportunity for Jefferson County to tie all these plans together at the same time. The, the reason why is that all of these different issues, wildfire, transportation, land use, they're all very tied together. The, the issues overlap. And so you, if you look at where some potential good locations for residential or commercial uses should go, those are influenced by where those wildfire risk areas are. Evacuation is very much tied to our transportation network, and the future of our transportation network is heavily tied to future projected land uses. So the ability for this project to tie all of these plans together is a huge opportunity for us to have consistent policies between all of these different land use plans. It's also very important because we're able to maybe reach some people that we wouldn't necessarily reach if we were just doing one of these plans at a time. Somebody that is interested in transportation may not come to meetings about the Community Wildfire Protection Plan or the evacuation annex, but since we're doing one big, a public engagement process for all of these plans, we're hoping it'll draw people in and help them to realize that all of these, in, all of these plans are intertwined and that their input could be very valuable for all of these plans and regulations.
Thank you. That's a great answer. Just to remind everybody, August 16th at 6 o'clock. And for those that didn't catch it, Steve, looks like you needed to have the, the website address again. Or call our, the county commissioners' office tomorrow and we'll give that to you, okay? Roger, you want to do some more questions?
Well, let's hear next from Bob. Bob, go ahead.
All right, take it off. I just have kind of a simple question. Pardon me. In Applewood, after 20-some years, our streak finally got repaved. I was excited. The two, two things came up that I have a question on. The first one is why that we've got probably three weeks in this nice new walkway. And now it looks like Consolidated or somebody else, another agency is going to cut up a big chunk of it. Would it be possible for the county and the appropriate agencies, you know, outside sources, Consolidated Mutual is one that comes to mind, maybe better coordination? I mean, it was probably a week after the, the top coat was put here on the street until the markings to cut into it. And again, I'm presuming it's from Consolidated, and I may be totally wrong because I don't have any good source of facts on it. So that's kind of the one question. And the other part of it is coincidentally, on 20th and Eldridge, not on Eldridge for Lakewood, but Lakewood was repaving on 20th. And, you know, the same time, same stretch of road, and it was, they're totally different finishes between a very nice finish that was on 20th and less-than-nice finish that was on, you know, the part of it that came into, came up Eldridge and also on the 20th. Sorry for the description. I wish I had better facts, but that's kind of what it is. I just, there's not much you can do. But it would be nice from an economic standpoint if we don't spend money as a county, as a government, on something and then, you know, a couple of weeks later, we're cutting it up. I mean, there's got to be some coordination, I think. Thank you for listening.
Hey, Bob, this is Brian Knight. I am the pavement project manager for Jefferson County. To address your first question, we do coordinate closely with all the utility districts, not just the water district, public service, Excel. That, we, it's an unforeseen emergency on their part. They knew in advance that does come up every now and then. I can also, I have your number. I can touch base with you tomorrow and kind of confirm those markings that you see on the road. Your second question with the Lakewood stuff, that was more of a top coat, a slurry seal, which I can discuss further with you tomorrow, too, if you'd like me to give you a call.
All right, thank you, Brian. Bob, good question. I think we all ask those questions sometimes about paving projects. So appreciate your asking that. Louise is next. Louise, go ahead.
Hello, hi. So the grant money is the reason why I'm...
So, the grant money is the reason why I'm calling, and I heard what you said, that the money is going to behave your health, housing, workforce, food. I see nothing for the long-time paying residents who are now senior citizens. However, you are suggesting an incentive to move and change our lifestyle so these exorbitant taxes get paid. Why not extend the benefits to seniors who have faithfully paid 40, 50 years in Jefferson County? You know, I suggest an increase in the senior benefit so we don't have to move, change our lifestyle, for the benefit of Jefferson County. I mean, we're not putting tax, we're not, we're not putting strain on the schools and on the services, so, you know, maybe extend something to give back to the people who have paid for 40 or 50 years instead of incentivizing us to change our lifestyle. And that's my question, and thank you for listening.
Thank you for your question, Louise. This is Mary O'Neill. And the funding that we are using for the projects that I mentioned earlier comes primarily from the American Rescue Plan. And just as an aside, with regard to the program's availability, all age groups would be eligible to access most or all of the programs. And I'd like to take just a minute to let you know why the county is receiving these funds, $113 million, was so vitally important for Jeffco to move beyond the COVID-19 pandemic. When Congress passed the American Rescue Plan legislation in 2021, they were clearly acknowledging the impact of the pandemic on local government. Whereas the CARES Act, which was passed in 2020, had been sent out as emergency funding to help address emergent issues in the community as quickly as possible, ARPA allowed local governments to be thoughtful about the new and ongoing needs to determine the best path forward. Due to Jefferson County's structural budget issues, we have seen millions of dollars in needed projects such as road and bridge repairs languish without funding for years. ARPA is allowing us to address the most serious of these problems now, rather than continuing to defer them to later dates with undoubtedly higher price tags. So, I hope that that provides you with a little bit more information to answer your question. Thank you again.
All right. Let's hear from Tiffany next. Go right ahead.
Hello. I had a question. I didn't get into the queue early enough, and it was on the first topic about the exemption for seniors over 65, and I was wondering, is there any exemptions for disabled veterans?
Tiffany, thanks so much for your question. Yes, this is Tracy Krafttharp. Yes, there is. So, you could go on the Assessor, or the Treasurer's Department, Treasurer's website. I'm looking at somebody to nod their head to me. Okay, thank you, Joe. It's on the Treasurer's website. The form should be on there. Let me just clarify, these are exemptions that come from the state. It's the state legislature that can make changes in this. Whether, I think somebody asked also whether these exemptions can be increased. They could be increased only if the state legislature increases those. So, Tiffany, hey, thanks for your question. Oh, one other thing. Mary Berg, our Executive Director at Human Services, asked me to mention, we've got some great services for vets in our Human Services Department. And so, I'm going to give you a phone number to call, and that's 303-271-4574. And yes, someone just put a piece of paper in front of me. That is, the Treasurer's website has that information about the vet's exemption. That's www.jeffco.us/treasure. Thanks, Tiffany. Back to you, Roger.
All right. Last question coming from Steve. Steve, go ahead. What's your question?
So, my question is the county commissioners, and I'm following up in the email because the last question I asked was not clearly asked of what I asked, so it was paraphrased. Why, when you're giving out these long domain names and other information that you have that are known to the county, why are you not putting out meeting minutes for these meetings to include the link of the recording, but capture those links and the phone numbers, etc., so that if people wanted to find out about more about TogetherJeffco.com, TogetherJeffco, that program, that actually go to the website, TogetherJeffco.com, and find the list of all the meeting, meetings there, or they go to a much longer one, or they can go, you know, people just are not going to capture these long, lengthy URLs on these calls, and often they may miss the phone numbers. I would recommend that you do capture meeting minutes, at least the pertinent things where websites mentioned, and also provide the link to the recording under your town hall meetings so that citizens, not the Jefferson County employees that know all this stuff by heart, but us dear citizens who pay our taxes and support our county commissioners and vote for them, would have that information easily found. Thank you so much.
Steve, this is Leslie. Thanks so much for your comments and your, and your question. We really appreciate that feedback very much. And first and foremost, we want to get you and other residents of Jefferson County as quickly and as efficiently to the information that you need on our website. Let me first tackle your question about meeting minutes for the town halls. If you go to jeffco.us/townhall, you'll be able to find a recording of tonight's conversation. And when it comes to major initiatives like Together Jeffco, which you heard Heather talk about a little bit earlier, simply visit jeffco.us, and if you go to our webpage, you will see information about Together Jeffco. You'll see other information about other major county initiatives as well. And we hope that's helpful, and it gets you and others to the information that you need. Thanks so much, Steve, for those comments. Great, great points.
This is Commissioner Tracy Krafttharp again, and I just want to say thank you. So, I understand that there's a lot of concerns around the property tax increase, and I'm glad we were able to answer some of your questions. We really do want to be able to get to the rest of your questions. And send us an email, send us, call us. We want to make sure that we address those concerns. Remember, August 16th is the Planning and Zoning Meeting. That's virtual. And remember, August 15th is the Assessor's Deadline for getting back to you on that property tax issue. Thanks. Commissioner Kerr?
Thanks. Thanks, Tracy. Thanks, Leslie. Thanks, Roger, and everyone else who helped us out tonight. And we really appreciate everyone. We had over 2,000 people attend tonight's town hall meeting. Your input is critical, so we always encourage you to participate in discussion whenever possible. We did receive a ton of questions about assessment values, and unfortunately, didn't have time to get to them all. We will be answering those on our town hall webpage, www.jeffco.us/townhall. And just also want to remind everyone that we do these telephone town halls four times a year. We have public hearings most Tuesdays, and all of us participate in multiple other public town, town halls with legislators and city councilors. So, please join us at all of these. Just to reiterate, tonight's recording will be on our town hall page, along with the questions and answers from the discussion, and will be posted on our town hall site, And I will go to Commissioner Dahlkemper with any final thoughts.
Great. Thanks so much. More than anything, we deeply appreciate you carving time out on your Monday evening to ask questions, to hear information that we're sharing. It gives us an opportunity to listen to your comments as well, and we can't do this work without you. We want to make sure that your best thinking and comments are reflected in the policy decisions that we're doing, and that the work that we're doing makes your life a little better every single day here in Jefferson County. We also want to thank everyone for joining us tonight, and we sure hope all those links that were shared a little bit earlier by Andy and Tracy are helpful. Also, remember, you can reach each one of us at this email address, commish@jeffco.us. Commish@jeffco.us, and that email comes directly to our office. Thanks again, everyone, for joining us, and I'll hand it back to you, Roger.
All right. Thank you. Lots of good information tonight. I will share just a couple more things that, just to summarize, the first of three scheduled meetings about the update to the short-term rental regulations is coming up on August 16th from 6:00 p.m., at 6:00 p.m., and will be held virtually. So, you can certainly go to the website and search, and you'll find all the information on that update. I'm not going to repeat the long email, the long URL. And again, www.jeffco.us/townhall is where you can find this recording and a link to all previous recordings. So, if you want to go back and spend a few hours and listen to some previous ones, they are all there, available for you. Thank you for joining us tonight. If we didn't get to your question or comment, you can leave us a message at the end of the call, so just stay on the line and wait for the tone. And on behalf of everyone here tonight and your hard-working team at Jefferson County and the commissioners, thank you for joining us, and have a good night.